Are you ready?
Wait one second.
Boop, 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 party break.
How's everybody doing?
Me?
It's cool in here, huh?
It's great.
You got a jacket over here, man?
It's okay for the delay when they have to.
Yeah.
Sometimes I bring it and I put that to the desk and one of the tippy up there. It's hard to keep that up.
All right. Here we go. Call the order. Mr. Usher, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, we had a scheduling issue, so we'll have someone else do the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity, God. Thank you for blessing us to see this day, Lord. And Father, we ask that you would lead and guide us on tonight. Heavenly Father, continue to bless this community, Heavenly Father. Continue to bless the citizens in it, Heavenly Father. And Lord, we just thank you for everything that you've done and everything that you're doing, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Mintz?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Klink has an excused absence. Mayor Bill Drury?
Here.
No closed session announcements, changes to the agenda? Nope. All right. Announcements. These proceeds may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website at www dot twenty-nine palms dot org. You may also livestream this meeting by going onto our website and clicking on "Meeting Agendas" link. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamation. I labeled them wrong, bear with me. Stacked my cards over. Okay. No. City of Twenty-Nine Palms proclamation, Juneteenth Independence Day, 2024, whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day, Emancipation Day, Emancipation Celebration, and Freedom Day is the oldest known celebration, commenorating the ending of slavery in the United States and has been celebrated by black community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, and declared that all persons held as slaves within the rebellious states are and henceforth shall be free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolishes slavery in the United States of America. And whereas this day, June nineteenth, has a special meaning and is called "Juneteenth", combining with the words "June" and "nineteenth", it marks the time of appreciation the African-American experience and encourages the continuous understanding and respect of the suffering of slavery. And whereas Juneteenth is observed, celebrated with traditions handed down through many generations, including family gatherings and picnics, music, stories told by elders and local historians, speeches, and recognition of these prominent individuals who have made significant achievements and contribu- and contributions to the community. And whereas it is times for reflection and rejoicing, and times for assessment, self-improvement, and for planning and future. And whereas residents are encouraged to join together in celebration of freedom, family, and community by embodying the spirit of peace, respect, brotherly love, to honor and salute our city's rich culture, legacy, and diversity. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of City of Twenty-Nine Palms does hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Juneteenth Independence Day. We recognize Juneteenth Independence Day historical significance to the United States and the support of continued nationwide celebration. We call upon the residents of Twenty-Nine Palms to take this opportunity to learn more about the past, better understand the experiences that have shaped the United States, and recognize the observance of the end of slavery as part of history and heritage of the United States, dated eleventh day of June, twenty twenty-four. I can present it to you. There you go. Yes. Proclamation records June as LB- LGBTQ plus month. City of Twenty-Palms proclamation, LB- LGBTQ plus Pride Month, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the City of Twenty-Nine Palms is a welcoming community, an exceptional place to live, work, and visit. And whereas the City of Twenty-Nine Palms is strengthened by the diversity of eth- ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents and to whom contribute to the vibrant character of our city. And whereas the City of Twenty-Nine Palms has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, LGBTQ plus community, as it committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for all community members so that all residents can live free from discrimination. And whereas the nation has founded on the principles that every individual has indefinite dignity, infinite dignity and worth, and the Twenty-Nine Palm City Council calls upon the people of the municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ plus equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to the end of discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the City of Twenty-Nine Palms commends the bravery and courage of those in the LGBTQ plus community who faces adversity in various forms of violence. Continuing opposition and oppression against LGBTQ plus people make it important for neighbors to stand up and show solidarity and support for the LGBTQ plus residents and the community at large. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms does hereby proclaim June, twenty twenty-four, as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. In support of the LGBTQ community, we call upon the residents of Twenty-Nine Palms to recognize the achievements of the LGBTQ community and celebrate the great diversity of our community, dated this eleventh day of June, twenty twenty-four. And to see this is Chelsea Chastain.
Hello, Council. My name is Chelsea Chastain. I am the proud Student Life and Engagement Specialist at Copper Mountain College, where we proudly celebrate Pride Month throughout the month of June. We are very grateful for your proclamation for the month of June in celebration of the diverse sexual or sexual orientations and gender identities of our community and of our students. Throughout the month of June, we have events throughout the month to celebrate our students and the diversity of our community, including a lunch, an LGBTQ plus Lunch and Learn that will highlight our LGBTQ plan, that highlights the diversity of our campus, the services we provide to our students, as well as our community as a whole. This Lunch and Learn is on June twenty-sixth at two P M. at Jorge's on our campus and is open to community members and community officials alike. I invite you to join us in a conversation where we talk about what currently exists and the future of resources and services to continue to create a more equitable and rainbow-tastic world for all of us. Thank you for this honor.
That's a great memory.
Yes, we love pictures.
Yeah. You could take pictures. Steve, will you hold my radio phone? Thank you. They're not lying, they're telling.
All right. Next, number three, presentation to Larry Bowden for his service as interim city manager.
Come on, Larry. You want us to wave the flags?
You don't have to yet, just get your stick.
Not yet.
I'll get my picture with the mayor.
No, get your stick.
Here we go again. It's like a thing, huh? You got tissue? I don't want you crying. Well, you've done it like seven, you've done it like seven times. How many is on your wall? Don't read it, it's special. Presented to Larry Bowden, interim city manager, October twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-four. Thank you for your enduring commitment and outstanding contributions to the community. Your support and dedication to the City of Twenty-Nine Palms has been greatly appreciated. Good luck in your second, third, or fourth retirement. Twenty-Nine Palm City Council, June, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you. You've made a job for us. Those doggy tricks. I want my picture with the mayor, that's why I'm reading like.
But you deserved it. Do I get to say something? Too bad, I'm going to.
He tossed me at a softball game.
That's all I need.
Stop the clock.
Most people know me, not everybody. I moved here in nineteen sixty-six. I think Twenty-Nine Palms has always been a welcoming community because you had to have any friends you could get. There wasn't people running everywhere. This was the hub of the Valley. Yucca Valley had nothing. They didn't even have a store back in those days. We had to pick their kids up on the way out of town to go to the football games. They got picked up at five o'clock in the morning to come to school here. So it's changed a lot. But I moved here in sixty-six. I graduated in, yeah, nineteen sixty-six. Graduated at high school in seventy-one. My wife Dana graduated in seventy-four. We got married. We have a son born here. We moved away for three years. Oh my God, thank God they let us come back. We came back with two sons. We joined my dad and my brother. We created the Bowden Company. We built over four hundred houses here. We had a lumberyard. We built trusses, cabinets, countertops. We were pretty successful and in dollar-figure wise in the day, over the twelve years, we did like forty-four million dollars. And that was a pretty big deal back in that time, but people go, wow, you got a lot of money. Yeah, well, we hired like, we had thirty-five people working for us full-time. We did a lot in this community. It was a big deal to us. We lived here in great times and we lived here when it was like a ghost town during times of the base deployment, when all the Marines were gone. When I moved here, all the Marines were gone. It was moms, kids, and eighteen-year-old MPs on the base, and it was a lot of fun. And when we closed down, my dad had a heart attack. Business on the base had come to, you know, what they call brack. They're realigning. People were freaked out. It all stopped. We sold all our lumberyard stuff. We were all good. I went to work for the city part-time in nineteen ninety-two for twenty hours a week at six dollars an hour. I worked here for over twenty-five years. I worked my way up to permanent after a year, to recreation programmer, all the different things there, recreation superintendent, and then they made me the acting, you're acting city manager when you work for the city. As you have a job with the city, you're interim when you're from the outside. So I was the acting city manager. They asked me to stay on and be the assistant city manager, which I held till I retired in two thousand and nineteen, I think. And I don't know if anyone's been more benef- had the city be more beneficial to their life than me. And I voted no on cityhood in nineteen ninety-six or whenever, eighty-seven, whenever it was. So I'm telling you all this stuff because I like this city. I was really fortunate to be a coach at Twenty-Nine Palms High School for twenty years. I coached some football, basketball, and baseball. Nine years I was the head coach and eleven years I was assistant coaches. That was the greatest times of my life. And I just want to say I had two simple rules. Don't lie or steal. I don't know why this next one always gets me. Usher, Usher could probably tell you my simple rules. He was there. He actually said something to me that I carried on somewhere else, so it all works together. Don't lie or steal. Always remember that integrity is what you do when no one is looking. And one question I asked, what's the opposite of success? What is it? Failure? It's not failure. Failure is what everyone will say. Everyone fails. The opposite of success is giving up. Failure is part of life, but quitting should never be. Those things are what are important to me. So Twenty-Nine Palms means a lot to me. I won't live much longer in the overall picture of life, but my hope is that somehow Twenty-Nine Palms remains one of the last small desert communities. I appreciate the time I worked with the people here. I think people did a great job. I think some said things were said at this podium. I know things were said at this podium by people that are absolutely not true and disgusting because that's integrity and I know some of them knew that they were false when they said them. So thank you very much. That's it, all I want to say.
You're not gonna stay for the whole meeting?
The city means a lot.
City means a lot. Oh. Those Golden Girl reruns are on. You gonna go catch them? All right. Happy retirement. All right, number four, presentation by Rediscover Twenty-Nine.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, thank you. So rediscover twenty-nine is a membership, business membership organization that we started in the November of two thousand and twenty-one, so we're coming up on our third year anniversary. We achieved our nonprofit status a couple months after, in early two thousand and two. And since then, we have been working to fill the void of the missing chamber of commerce while we've been here. We were approached at the time by former city manager Frank Laquino to try to get merchants association together. It started as, as he called it, as the downtown business owners because at the time, the six of us that were around getting it going had all downtown businesses. We have since transitioned and been working to push rediscover twenty-nine because we don't have any boundaries within Twenty-Nine Palms for our membership or the businesses that we serve, right? We want to work with anyone that's interested in business in twenty-nine as well as groups that are coming from outside of twenty-nine to do fun things in twenty-nine.
We, as an organization, rediscover already has a proven track record of throwing really great events that engage our community. In the past, we've done the Party at the Plaza. We've had a summer concert series. In two thousand and twenty-two, we did the Pioneer Days kickoff and the Halloween market. We used to run the Sunset Strolls. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had the Pride Twenty-Nine Festival in Freedom Plaza, and that also took place at various satellite locations throughout the community. Just this last year, we had the Holiday Cash Mob, which engaged over two hundred of our community members to come out and patronize our local businesses and also generated, I think, upwards of five thousand dollars in the day for their local businesses. We also have an annual Christmas tree farm that usually is held behind white label vinyl and high desert daydream, and we also intend to continue to hold our silent discos. Upcoming, we are hosting the rediscover stage at Freedom Days. We are putting together in August four days of programming under the area Twenty-Nine Galactic Gathering moniker, planning a Halloween trunk-or-treat, working on our holiday markets and events, and also looking forward to putting together some hopefully flagship events that continue throughout the years coming into two thousand and twenty-five. So we really hope to just continue to work with the city and the community and other business members and business owners on putting together awesome events that not only bring people from outside the community into Twenty-Nine Palms, but also engage all of our local community members.
Yeah, and we're excited about this next step with the city because as we've grown from, you know, six-ish businesses that were a part of this membership and we've represented over fifty businesses in our time, our current membership sits right around the high twenties. But it is time, as business is growing in twenty-nine, that we need to make ourselves more available to prospective business owners, to current business owners, and we also need some of the city partnership in order to do that, right? We're excited to be taking on the ribbon cuttings. We have our first one scheduled for June twenty-ninth at Sun of the Desert, but we look forward to bringing a little bit more fun to them, trying to schedule around and have them be at times that will actually be business generators for the businesses instead of just a really good photo op. And so we look forward to, you know, kind of taking those traditional things off of the city's plate and livening them up a little bit and making them a little bit more fun for the businesses. We plan to hold quarterly business mixers, highlighting new or existing businesses around town. Same sort of thing. We like to make things a little bit more fun, and so as we go and as we plan to do these things, we're gonna try to liven them up a little bit in the interest of generating some more people attending, generating more business for those new businesses as they start out. The other thing that we're really excited about, and since we have been an organization, we meet monthly on Mondays at ten A M., first Monday of every month. But in the past six months especially, as there are a lot of out-of-towners thinking about doing business in Twenty-Nine Palms, we've had a lot of people come to our meetings just to pick our brains about what's happening, what's the process, what do we see coming in the next couple of years? And the original reason that we started rediscover twenty-nine was because we found that there wasn't like a one-stop shop for how to open a business in twenty-nine, right? It was really difficult to figure out which city offices needed to be consulted or what the steps were and how you went about that process. And so what we hope to do is to become a gathering point for prospective business owners, answer those questions, make things a little bit more accessible, in the idea that hopefully that generates and brings some more businesses to the city. To do this, we plan to make up like a one-pager, a short pamphlet that we're gonna have in all of the city offices. That way, when people come into the city offices, ask for information, hey, I'd like information on a business license, or I'd like information on how to start a business, not only do they get the city answer that they get, but they also get our contact information as a resource so that they can reach out to us directly. And then depending on what sector or business they're in, we can kind of steer them either to somebody that's already doing that or we can just gonna give them our general knowledge about how the process works. Monthly meetings, I covered community and camaraderie. Yeah, we're just, you know, it's an exciting time here, business-wise. It is exciting because there is a good combination of people that have been here for a long time doing things, and there is a lot of new ideas and people that are coming in with new talents and new expertise or fields of expertise. And so just really creating a place where everyone can kind of bounce ideas off of each other, figure out, you know, what, how to go about doing things, and mostly just trying to figure out what we like to do and then hoping that everyone else around us also likes to do them too. I think that's our last slide. But yeah, any questions or?
Any questions up here?
No questions. I just want to say thank you for this presentation. Looks like a great idea. I definitely see it as a benefit to the community and look forward to, I'm so sorry. Look forward to working with you.
Before you sit down, certificate of recognition presented to Michael Usher and members of Discovery Two-Nine. For your tireless effort and valuable role in organizing and creating Discover Two-Nine, a membership organization representing the businesses and the community committed to achieving growth and the lasting opportunity, the City of Twenty-Nine Palms commends you and your valuable contributions to this community. All right. Council comments, reports, and meetings attended. Councilmember Octavia Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report at this time.
You will once we start going. Like, oh yeah, I was there. Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, because he was at the grand opening ribbon cutting at America's Choice, and so was I.
That was your thing.
Whatever. You was there. Also, I attended Twenty-Nine Palms Elementary Promotion Program. Those kids going to junior high school. Thought that was fantastic. And then, of course, I went to my son's award ceremony, but he still got a little ways to go. And then I went to the high school graduation as well. That was great, fantastic. And then, let me see here, I did the Kiwanis Club Pancake Breakfast. That was pretty good. They had some good chow. And then, I got all this written down here. And I did, yeah, that's it. And then I just want to wish everyone a Happy Father's Day coming up. Also want to wish my wife, Frida, a happy birthday coming up. Make sure I get that in. Everybody heard that, right? I love her. And then just let everybody know we got Warhawks football coming up. And make sure you're drinking plenty of water because it's getting hot out there. I like to say drink water till your feet slosh and then drink some more, so just make sure you drink plenty of water because it's hot. Congratulations to Larry. I know he's gone already, probably already going to a fishing hole or something, but. But, okay, congratulations. It was a pleasure working with you. And that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mintz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a event committee meeting I attended last week on.
Uh, I had a, uh, event committee meeting I attended last week on Friday. I was also at the ribbon cutting at the American, I wrote this down, America's Choice Real Estate, uh, company. It's on 29 Palms Highway. And yes, congratulations to my friend out there, Larry. He didn't want a picture with me, but that's what I got when him, we had matching shirts on one meeting, so that's all that matters. Good job, Larry, thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I can, let's see, where do I go? I attended Little League closing ceremonies for the season, I also attended the high school graduation, ribbon cutting at the American's Choice Real Estate. Uh, I attended the Up Close Show on Z1077 with the city manager. And I'd like to say congratulations to Larry once again, thank you for everything. And also congratulations to all the graduates of 2024, and all those students who completed another year closer to their graduation. And happy Father's Day to all the dads out there. And that is all I got, any else? Be good, we're moving on. Consent counter. All matters listed under the consent counter are to be considered routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent counter and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on the consent counter items prior to the city council actions.
So Mayor, uh, one thing that I would like to add as a point of clarification for item. Nine, the community events grants, just a little bit of clarity on the language. And that is specifically, the subcommittee is making a recommendation for a total of $7,000, and that's consisting of a May 28th award of $1,500, plus, if the council so votes, an additional award this evening of $5,500, for a total of $7,000. And so if any council member so chooses to make a motion to accept the consent counter as read, that they would also include that, uh, modification.
All right, thank you. Anyone from this council, with a point thing for the consent counter? Anyone from the audience? This is awesome. Motion?
I'll move the consent counter with number nine's, um, abbreviation.
Second.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Number 401.
All right, moving on. Public hearings, number 11, amendments to the city's master fee schedule for FY 2024 and '25 recommendation.
Very good, Mayor, thank you so much. So we have got, uh, Abigail Hernandez, and she is currently at a conference, and she is going to utilize, uh, both Zoom and teleconference here, uh, to be able to present the, the next two items. Three items.
Thank you, Stone. Um, well, good evening, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, as, uh, city mayor, uh, city manager said, we are presenting tonight the, uh, proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year 2425, and actually before I start, um, hopefully Larry's still there, but I just wanted to say thank you, uh, for everything that he did, um, all his support during, during this time, um, as interim city manager. Thank you, Larry. Um, so just now moving on to the, uh, master fee schedule. So this schedule was developed, um, with the assistance of, assistance of Walden Financial Services back in 2020. Uh, the schedule was adopted by council on May 26, 2020, and it has been adjusted by CPI ever since. All of the fees listed on the schedule, with the exception of, uh, the sewer fees, state and county mandated fees, were adjusted by four, by 4.3%, which is the Consumer Price Index for Riverside-Samarino for the 12-month period ending March 2024. Uh, and since most of the fees for animal control and park and rec, um, are still being collected over the counter, we rounded the fees for those departments to the nearest dollar for the convenience of the public, as requested, um, by council in prior years. Um, other changes to the master fee schedule include addition of, um, impound vaccination fees and city licensed staff replacement fees in the animal control department. The proposed fees are between 51 and 67% lower than the full cost of providing the services. Uh, for instance, if you refer to page six of the attached reschedule, let me pull it up.
And Abigail, thank you for pulling that out. Would you be able to zoom in on that in order to maximize the appearance of that document? Thank you.
Yes. Can you see it better?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, it is a little bit better.
So, um, so for example, for instance, the, um, impound vaccination fee for a dog, the full cost is, uh, $12.31, uh, which includes the, uh, vaccines, the needles, and, uh, staff time. And that combined, uh, like I said, is $12.31. However, Animal Control Department is suggesting the fee to be at $6, which is, uh, again, the city will be subsidizing 51% of that fee. Um, other changes, um, include, uh, the Community Development Department. Um, they made several changes in their fee schedule, uh, and just basically to clean it up and remove some of the fees that are not, that are no longer applicable. Uh, one of those being the, um, the, the cutter, gutter, and sidewalk fee, uh, which was based on, uh, per linear foot, and now those, um, are now gonna be modified and replaced with the current improvement impact fee, which is based upon linear street frontage of the property. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, not linear. Uh, it's based on a square footage of the proposed structure. Um, as you may recall, the impact fee was adopted by council on May 28, 2024, and the fees are effective 30 days after the adoption of the ordinance. So this, um, four fees. And actually, this five fees on this, uh, green section are the ones that are gonna be replacing the car, uh, the curved gutter and sidewalk fees. Now, let's move to the building department. So the building department is recommending the addition of the energy-saving battery fee at a full cost of $172.54. Um, any electrical component added to a home and regulated by the building code must be listed by an approved lab. The listing is a compliance for safe-to-use. For a home-use storage battery to be listed, the manufacturer must comply with the fire safety testing standard. The National Fire Protection Administration is the authority that has written the fire testing standards, which must be carried out by the listing labs. The fee is intended to cover the full cost of evaluations conducted by building inspectors to verify that the contractors provide proof of the listing agency, as well as details on the fire set, on the fire testing data. Um, for. The park and rec. Um. That department is recommending, uh, the addition, not addition, but the amendment of the adult kickball fee, uh, from $263 to $466 to be in line with the adult softball team fee, as both programs use the same resources. So, uh, as I mentioned, all of the fees, um, in red, those are fees that are no longer applicable to the city, so we'll be removing those from the city fee, just to, um, avoid any confusion. Okay, so the fees mentioned were developed according to Prop 218, which states that the rates must be based upon the proportionate cost, the proportionate cost of providing the services, and not to exceed the cost of providing the service. Rates must be fair and equitable, and a ratepayer cannot subsidize another ratepayer. The recommended fees identified in the master fee schedule are either at or lower than full cost recovery. And to put this into perspective, if we look at the program revenues for, uh, fiscal year 2425 budget for animal control and community services, um, we're subsidizing 87% of those fees. And for the community development, we're subsidizing 41%. So we're not collecting fees at full cost, which, again, you know, it's in line with Prop 218. You know, we cannot make a profit from this, uh, fees. And that concludes my presentation. Um, so the recommendation for tonight is for city council to adopt resolution. I'm sorry, to, to adopt a resolution adopting the amendments to the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2425. Any questions?
What, what number says?
Resolution 2414.
I make a motion that, um, the city council approve resolution 2014 adopting the amendments to the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 202425.
I'll second.
Councilmember Mintz?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Approved 401.
Very good, Abigail, would you like to move on to item number 12? Proposed budget revisions for capital project funds, special revenue funds, and successor agency funds for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025?
Yes, thank you, Stone. Okay. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, for this presentation, we are, I'm recommending the, the council adopt the revisions for the special revenue funds, capital projects funds, and successor agency fund. Special revenue funds, uh, are established by city council and other, or other agencies to collect money that must be used for a specific project of purpose. The funds must provide, um, will provide an extra level of accountability and transparency to taxpayers and or rate payers, that their tax or fee dollars will go towards an intended purpose. Capital projects on account for financial transactions used for the acquisition or construction of pro- capital facilities and other capital-related projects. Um, the successor agency fund is, um, account for the assets and liabilities transferred from the former 29 Palms redevelopment agency as a successor agency. So the revenues collected through this special funds include, uh, tax revenue, property tax, grants fees, and other revenues like, um, interest revenues. So for fiscal year 2020, 2425, we're projecting a total of $2.1 million in tax revenue, which it's basically coming from, um, the Measure I, gas tax, RMRA, um, all those programs. Uh, for grants, we are projecting about $5 million, uh, for several projects, including, um, Split Rock Bridge, Sullivan Bike Path. Uh, for fees, we're projecting about $522,000, and, um, those are mainly, uh, impact fees, assessment fees from the lighting and landscaping, um, assessments, uh, and TIBET fees. So as I mentioned before, the tax revenues, um, are from RMRA, gas tax, and Measure I, and here's the breakdown of how much we're projecting to receive in fiscal year 2425. Uh, so for the RMRA projects, uh, we are, um, can use the funding to overlay several roads throughout the city. And, um, this table shows all those roads that will be overlaid, um, during this fiscal year. So if this table just shows the, uh, gas tax and SB1 tax revenue since 2014. Um, as you can see, the last couple of years, our gas tax has been stagnant, 2%. I'm sorry, 2% for fiscal year 2324, and, um. And actually, we are projecting, and I'm sorry, I can't, not sure why, why it's not showing it on, on my screen. But for 2425, we're projecting a 6% increase compared to this current fiscal year. Um, those are the projections provided by, um, by the state. However, I've noticed in the past few years, um, their projections are actually higher than the actuals. So I wouldn't be surprised if, so, the 6% is actually 3% when we get our actuals. Okay, so this are some of the, um, projects, the capital projects that we are, um, you know, projecting for this fiscal year. Uh, we're projecting about $2.6 million since street projects, $1.8 million in parks, $8.8 million in safety projects, and $1.1 million in other projects, and I'll be showing the breakdown in subsequent slides. So for street projects, we have road overlays, uh, chip seal, street repairs and maintenance, street whining, um, projects. The $174,000 for, uh, chip seal, uh, we have a cooperative agreement with Samarino County to conduct pavement, pavement preventative maintenance work, uh, which includes preparation work and chip seal or leveling course and chip seal on approximately $4.26 million of city roads. And this table, um, shows all the roads that are gonna be, uh, chip sealed as part of that, uh, cooper- uh, cooperative agreement with the county. And for parks, we have, uh, the larger one is the replacement of the, uh, bull field lights, Alaki Park. Um, the remaining, uh, funds for that project is $987,000. Um, we also have, uh, parking lot improvements, Alaki Park, which are gonna be funded with CDBG funds at $240,000, and the Citywide Channel Trail, um, at $569,000. Some of the safety projects that we're gonna be working on is Split Rock, which is, um, you know, we've been having this project for, for years now. Um, the design is pretty much completed, so we're planning to start construction, um, anytime soon. And we're projecting construction alone to be about $4.1 million. Um, the Sullivan Bike Path is estimated at close to $4 million, and that's gonna be, uh, funded through a grant. Um, area crossing is, uh, $329, I'm sorry, $329,000. And, um, safety improvement project at Two Mile, Adobe, and Utah Road, uh, are estimated for $120,000. So the projects that we're gonna be working on are, uh, purchasing a vehicle for code enforcement for $50,000, uh, an animal control vehicle for $105,000, um, and working on animal control building upgrades and the animal, the new animal shelter, um, as well as city whole structures at $45,000. So the recommendation tonight is for city council to approve the resolution adopting the city's capital project funds, special revenue funds, and successor agency budget revisions for fiscal year 2425, as well as the interim transfers for fiscal year 2425. And those transfers are just administrative fees that we are allowed to charge, um, on a couple of funds, like the gas tax. So we, um, are recommending a transfer of $10,000 from gas tax fund to the general fund, $10,000 from the Measure I to the general fund, $25,000 from the successor agency fund to the general fund. And all those transfers have been previously approved by, uh, the funding agency. Uh, we did not come up with this amount, uh, you know, the city didn't just say like, oh, we want $10,000. Uh, whatever transfers we have, uh, I'm providing today, or I'm recommending today, have been approved. Um, and that's all I have, any questions?
I do have a question on, uh, go to the slide before this, on the street cleaner, you had $35,000?
Oh, the street sweeter?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, um, so remember you asked me if we're still getting the $120,000? Okay, so that, um, so, remember you asked me if we're still getting the hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars from the, uh, from BRTech? So, what, uh, we are getting it, uh, and we can use some of the funding, um, there's like operating costs and whatever is left. We're doing a transfer to the capital projects fund to essentially, or eventually fund, um, the acquisition of a new street sweeper.
Oh, okay.
So, for this fiscal year, we're projecting that we're gonna have a leftover of about, about thirty-five thousand dollars that we can transfer to that fund, um, that would eventually be used, uh, for the acquisition.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I know, I know a street sweeper did not cost thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know, so, yeah, every year that amount, depending on how much we spend on the operating side of it, well, whatever is left. So, some years, uh, when we started this, um, I believe we were transferring like eighty thousand dollars. So, as our operating costs get higher and higher, the, the transfer is gonna get lower and lower.
Okay, thank you.
Done up here? Public? None? Back up here for discussion or motion?
Are you ready for motion, Mr. Mayor?
And there's nothing more?
No. Is this number fifteen, twenty-four fifteen?
Twenty-four fifteen.
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna, resolution number twenty-four fifteen, approving the budget revisions for capital projects, special revenue, uh, funds, excluding project finance funds and successor agency fund for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. And then the internal transfers for FY twenty-four, twenty-five, ten thousand dollars, uh, gas tax fund, ten thousand dollars for Measure I, and twenty-five thousand from the successor agency.
Say.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Approved four-zero-one.
Number thirteen?
Mr. Mayor, this is where I get to accuse myself. This is obviously Project Phoenix, uh, funding, so I have to-
Yes, sir.
-step out.
Thank you, Councilmember Mintz. Let me know when I'm ready to proceed.
He has left.
I, I can't see your, your screen, so.
You are ready to proceed, Abigail.
Thank you. Okay, so, now moving on to the Project Phoenix, uh, Project Phoenix Funds and Enterprise Funds revisions for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, so, the Project Phoenix Funds account for activities associated with the city's downtown revitalization project. And the Enterprise Fund was created to account for the cost of providing source services to a limited number of businesses, within the new Freedom Plaza and the user charges by which these costs are recovered. Um, so, a total of two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars is left, uh, from the two-point-three million dollars that was allocated from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the Project Phoenix project. Um, there's also about one-point-one million dollars in, um, housing funds, but they can only be used for affordable housing projects. So, here's a breakdown of what's left from the two-hundred-and-forty, from the two-point-three million dollars, um, fund that we had for the Project Phoenix. So, we have about a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, for the store improvement or the business loan program. Kate will be providing an update on that program, um, pretty soon. Then we also have about thirty-one thousand dollars left for multi-purpose facility fixtures, and twenty-nine thousand dollars on street furniture, and fifteen thousand dollars for public art. Um, then the Enterprise Fund, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, we are working on the package treatment plan. The construction, um, has been approved by the EDA. And so, we're working with Michael from Charles Abbott, uh, on getting constructions, um, approvals, and just talking to, uh, the grantor to make sure that we have everything in place before proceeding. Um, then the operating expenditures for this fund are at eighty-eight thousand dollars. As I said, it's very, it's a very small budget for, for those two funds, so it's a very short presentation here. Um, and the recommendation for tonight is for city council to adopt a resolution approving the budget revisions for, uh, Project Phoenix Funds and the Enterprise Fund for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, as well as the inner fund transfer for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five of seventy thousand dollars from the general fund to the sewer fund to subsidize the operating cost of this fund. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions up here? Public, anything? Everyone's happy, I like that. All right, back up here for a motion discussion.
Sixteen, right? Okay. I make a motion that we approve, uh, the resolution number twenty-four sixteen, approving the budget revision for the Project Phoenix Funds and Enterprise Fund for fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-five, and also inner fund transfer for fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-five of seventy thousand, transfer from the general fund to sewer fund to subsidize operating costs of this fund.
I second that.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz abstains. Mayor Bildrein?
Aye.
Approved three-zero-two.
All right, discussion and potential action items, number fourteen. Fourteen, Solvays Recycle Program Update.
Good evening. It's nice to be here with you again.
Uh, I think your microphone's not on.
Is that better? By now.
I can hear you, but it's not, mic hear you.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, good evening. It's nice to be here with you again. Um, I'm here tonight just to provide a brief update about our recycling programs, specifically SB thirteen-eighty-three. Uh, so, as you know, commercial rollout began in January. We've completed that rollout of the organics carts to all the businesses.
It's on, yeah.
Okay, I'll get in closer for you. All right. Uh, commercial rollout is complete, and we are currently in the process of rolling out all the residential carts throughout the city. Um, that will be completed hopefully by the end of June, and residents will see, at the next meeting, we'll be bringing that rate package to you. Uh, BRTech is handling that, they've done a pretty good job. I haven't, I've had about six complaints on the rollout, both commercially and residentially so far. Uh, mostly compliments, people have called me to say how excited they are, so it's been received very well. I've been, as you know, usually I'm up here giving bad news, so the city manager told me I need to give some good news from time to time, so I'm here to do that tonight. So, as you know, we entered into an MOU with San Bernardino County Environmental Health some time back to handle edible food recovery. And part of that was capacity planning, that's one of the tenants of this law. And their initial report came in that we were seriously deficient, uh, like two-hundred-and-thirty tons deficient. Uh, I was a little upset, challenged, this involved John Davis, who is my go-to guy for this kind of stuff. And he facilitated a meeting between CalRecycle, County EHS, Tia and her team, who are great and work very well with us. And through that meeting, through some clarification, through some give-in by CalRecycle, I'm pleased to report to you that we now went from being negative two-hundred-and-thirty tons to two-hundred-and-ten tons in the positive of extra capacity. At no expense, saving us probably easily five to six million dollars in capacity we would need to build. So, I, I'm here to tell you that, and then say what, you know, I really wanna thank CalRecycle even, uh, for help, you know, being willing to listen to us. Uh, the County EHS for really going to bat for us and adjusting their numbers, and of course, John Davis for just facilitating all of this and always being at bat for us.
Eli, you might wanna explain who Ja, John Davis works with?
John, John Davis works on our behalf of the Desert Mountain JPA. He's been involved with us since AB nine thirty-nine, all those years ago, um, for a very reasonably small amount of money. He is involved at the state level in every recycling program and helps, uh, so like Thursday, I'll spend three hours with, with John and all the other, my counterparts from all the other jurisdictions, Apple Valley, Victorville, and we'll all share with each other what we're doing, our successes, our failures, try to work this out so that we drive down the cost for everybody.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for giving me a, a update, even though I attend the JPAs, and the information that we cover at those meetings, it seemed like they never talked about us, but- so, thank you for really being involved. I really appreciate it.
Full responsibility for that. I, I'm only ever here if it's my last resort, I can't figure it out, I can't get what I need to get, then I come to you guys to kinda give you a warning and a heads up, and I have to do a better job of telling you the positive things we achieve.
No, thank you. Very, greatly appreciate it.
That it? All right? 'Cause we see the report, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, yeah, and, and, you know, council, I would, I'd like to add to that if, if I so may. You know, Eli, Mr. Marshall, has a number of strengths. One of his strengths is humility. And it was certainly Eli's collaboration with all of the different entities that he listed, but it was specifically Eli's tenacity that helped change this. And him taking a look at some of these circumstances, like, let's say, being responsible for all of the organic waste for all of the Morongo Unified School District, because our head, uh, Morongo Unified is headquartered in our city, even though these schools are located all throughout the basin. By virtue of the fact that it was based in our city, we were then responsible for all of the organic waste. And so, if Eli had been passive and just said, well, hey, the state says that we have to do this, and we have to build a facility to, to accommodate this two-hundred-and-thirty-ton overage, then that would have been the responsibility of the city, then to pay for the facility. Eli mentioned five to six million, I talked to another source that would said conservatively it could have been ten million. And so, that would have been something that by virtue of SB thirteen-eighty-three, we would have had to have built. However, due to Eli and his tenacity and his ability to build collaborative relationships and to really parse through these things and do deep research, he was able to get this massive swing. So, again, one of the things, there's many things I respect about Eli, his humility is one, but I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge this, the tremendous contribution that he has made to the city by virtue of this significant win. So, thank you.
And I, I just wanna point out on that note that we are still responsible for all of the schools in the school district. The big change that occurred here is, in the state of California, they love averages, right? And so, the average school in a school district is charged with thirty-three thousand pounds per year of edible food that must be recovered. There's a separate calculation that wasn't publicized, that for us rural districts, we can apply a different calculation that is based on the personnel at each site versus that, the fact that it's just a school. And by making that switch, we went from that thirty-three thousand pounds per each of the seventeen schools to thirteen-hundred-and-forty pounds for each of those schools. And that dropped us dramatically. The other thing was the farmer's market. We argued, I argued very heavily against there being a charge for the farmer's market, and they removed that. State or brothers backhalls to San Bernardino, so why are we being charged for that? So, it was just these, we chipped away at it over time, and that's where the county came into play, there was a lot of meetings back and forth. But, um, you know, the rules and regulations, everybody's learning, but sometimes CalRecycle just says, well, you're a Californian, here's the number. And you say, yeah, but I'm not the same as Sacramento, or Fresno, or Los Angeles, I'm different. And it's hard to get them to recognize that, but we'll keep trying, we'll keep fighting for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eli.
Right, future council initiated items. Any, any ads?
Yeah, I'm being asked from constituents that we have a discussion item regarding, um, T-Bid as it, um, to be able to look at, uh, some changes, I guess, a discussion item? On T-Bid?
Sure, what type of changes are?
Well, there's a discussion item and potential action items. Um, they just wanna have a discussion regarding T-Bid. Say that again? I thought I just put it out there, constituent asked.
Well, I need a second. Or no? All right. Public comments. This is a time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and should not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the name and address slips and give it to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. We have some. This Cindy, Cindy Bernard? Okay. Yep, I looked at it twice.
Hi, I'm here in my capacity as editor-in-chief of the Desert Trumpet to announce, um, that we're having a town hall on June twenty-ninth from three to five PM, envisioning our city's future, an open discussion among residents facilitated by me and Desert Trumpet staff. We have three guests that are gonna help to kick off the discussion. Chris Clark, who's the host of the Ninety Miles From Needles Desert Protection Podcast, Carrie Williams, who you know, um, co-owner of JD and Beauty Supply and CEO of Women of Color Global Twenty-Nine, and Paul Razzo, who's a business owner and a member of the PAC. Um, it's at the Community Center, um, in Freedom Plaza, it's free, we're inviting everybody to participate. It's meant to be not for speeches, it's meant to be for real discussion about the future of our city. It has four, um, components, four topics, creating an affordable and sustainable city, balancing development with the maintenance of our desert ecosystem, creating an inclusive community. The, the statement read today was very helpful in that regard, I think. Um, and what does positive change look like in Twenty-Nine? Um, and it's meant to be a community-wide discussion, so I just wanted to let you all know about it, I hope you all can attend. And, um, I also wanted to thank the city who's giving us a fee waiver for that event. Um, thank you very much. And we are also just putting it out there, I know not many people here, but in case anybody's watching, that we are having a city council candidate forum on September fourteenth. So, anybody that's thinking of running, if you get your papers through and everything's together, please mark that on your calendar, because we wanna make sure that everybody who's running, and I think we are going to have multiple candidates in District One and multiple candidates in District Two. Um, I hope that, um, you come. Thanks so much.
Thank you. City manager's update.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a few things to discuss tonight. So, uh, the goal here on this one is just to provide a few-minute overview on some things that I thought that the community would appreciate hearing and or having a check-in. And so, this city manager update, this will evolve, and certainly, as time goes on, there might be some things that'll just put on everyone's collective radar. Uh, some things will be a little bit of a recap. Uh, and so, this evening, we've had a couple of conversations about the SB thirteen-eighty-three, the organic waste recycling. I think that's gonna be a pretty, uh, pretty good opportunity for our constituents to do a little bit more to help with the overall, uh, waste issues that the state of California is experiencing. You know, in terms of growing pains, I think it's actually to be pretty easy to absorb, I, I believe even Eli had mentioned that, you know, we, originally, we had just had one set of trash cans, now we have recycle, now we're gonna have green waste, so not a big deal there. And as Eli had pointed out, that is something that is already, uh, in process. Also, just wanted to briefly touch, touch in on the Home Two Suites next to Freedom Plaza. And so, right now, that, the entity that is working on that project, they're actually in their fourth round of plan checks. And so, you know, they, they present the building department, their plans, the building has to check, they make comments pursuant to Title twenty-four, and there's a back and forth. And so, it's typically pretty common to have a number of plan checks, and this is something that all developers have to do from any sort of commercial or residential, then ultimately to be able to obtain their building permits. Once their building permits are obtained, then they can go ahead and move forward with construction. Based on the comments that we as a city has received- Based on the comments that we as a city has received, uh, they, once they get the final plan checks done and fully approved, they're gonna pull building permits and supposedly they're gonna start construction. There's a lot of things that often delay that, but right now, that's what we're being told. One thing that I'd also make mention that I thought is valuable for the community, the council to know, is they had originally started, they, they'd submitted the plans and then they had paused. And earlier this year, I wanna say it was in April, when the City Council went ahead with that package treatment plant and awarded the contract in order to get that contractor to actually start moving forward with the implementation of that. That was really key for that hotel project to move forward. And in fact, there had been a period of time where they had been quiet, they had not been responsive to any of the building can, plan comments. Within two weeks of council taking that action to utilize those grant funds in order to move forward on that package treatment plant, within two weeks of that council decision, the, uh, hotel had resubmitted their plans. So there's really, you know, correlation doesn't necessarily prove causation, but it was awful coincidental. Within two weeks of council taking that action, they were back in the city with plans saying, hey, let's move this thing forward again. Uh, T-Bid, you know, a lot of great successes there with T-Bid. Thought I'd talk about that here real quick. So I attended on Saturday evening with my lovely wife. I attended the 29 and Beyond Event. And for the folks who were not able to attend that event, I was thoroughly impressed. So one of the things that I thought I would ask is, wh- what does, how often do you have up on stage a nationally recognized comedian, Bobcat Goldthwait, a comedian from New Zealand, and literally a NASA rocket science, rocket scientist? And so it was a great event, very diverse discussions, and then of course, the comedy was fantastic. The food was very good. And that was one of the things that our T-Bid helped promote. Of course, we have to thank Jason and Reed, uh, the, kinda the masterminds behind that event, and they've got a lot of programming. But overall, that was one of the successes that I think can be directly traced to not only those entrepreneurs, but also T-Bid. One of the things too, that Brian had mentioned from T-Bid, was the fact that tourism brings about $2 million into the local economy, both in TOT and indirect spending. It supports about 300 jobs. In fact, at that 29 and Beyond Event, they did a quick survey by raising the hands, where are people from? And about half of the people in the audience raised their hands, saying they were from 29 Palms. And so about half were locals and about half were from outside of the area. So I thought that was a great success, not only for our locals, but also just the fact that it's attracting some people. So we've talked about, uh, the 300 jobs in tourism, and we've also talked about, come to the basics of T-Bid in terms of the fact that T-Bid is funded by a 1.5% tourism fee that actually our visitors pay. And what that enables T-Bid to do with the collection of professionals there on the board, that allows them to market our community, both regionally, within our state, and nationally. And they market it, they mark our region, our city, as a complete entity. Uh, vacation, vacation home rentals, uh, you know, remarkably, the number of vacation home rentals within our city is declining. The permits are not being renewed, and they're either being sold or maybe converted into long-term rentals. But even though the number of VHR permits is declining, this is the first time since VHRs have been instituted that the amount of transit occupancy tax that we've received as a city from VHRs has surpassed by 2% the amount of transit occupancy tax that our hotels generate. And so why is that a win? Because that TOT goes to pay for roads, it goes to help fund police, it helps fund park, uh, park events, you know, Parks and Rec. Animals, animal control, our team over at Animal Control, they're doing an incredible job. Adoptions are up. They have, they do so much with so little. And they're actually, I believe it's gonna be on July 20th, they're gonna do a fundraising event with the great folks over at Outpost 29 with Reed and Jason. And that is gonna be a fundraising event for, uh, for our animal, uh, our, our animal shelter. So that's gonna be a great opportunity for the locals to help out. Rick Boyd, I'm not gonna talk about it much tonight, but Rick Boyd and his team are working on a major, major win. And if it can come to fruition, and I think it will, we'll be able to share that with the community. And it is signi, it's stunning what their creativity and hard work is gonna bring to our community in terms of that shelter. Uh, next, East Valley Regional Steering Committee. Uh, due to scheduling conflicts from Councilmember Scott's, uh, schedule, I'm gonna be assuming his position and serving on that committee. So one other thing that we've, we've stood up here is the visit29.org. So this is a great website for both our residents and our visitors to take a look at what's going on in our community, what events are coming up. And so when they hop on that website, they're gonna find a lot of things. So, uh, an important one, a vital one that's coming up just here in the next week and a half, is gonna be Juneteenth. We're actually gonna have two events for the Juneteenth event to celebrate that, to acknowledge that important federal holiday. The first one is gonna be on Saturday, June 15th at Knott's Sky Park, and that's gonna be the Women of Color Global. They're gonna be hosting an event that is gonna take place from noon to 8:00 PM. That event is gonna be open to the public. There are gonna be food vendors, live music, and a photo booth. There's gonna be a community march that will take place at 11:45. And this event is really cosponsored also by the City of 29 Palms. One other thing that we're gonna do as a city to celebrate, and I'm, I'm looking forward to being a part of this, is on Wednesday, June 19th, on actual Wednesday, June 19th, at 8:00 AM, we're gonna have a June 19th flag raising ceremony here at City Hall. And we, our staff is gonna be working on getting some custom bagels from 29 Loaves, which if you've ever had them, they are incredible. So we're gonna be having that. We're gonna have some cream cheese, of course, and butter, and, and some coffee and orange juice, and really make a little bit of a celebration for that sag, uh, that flag raising. So I encourage people from the community to come out and celebrate that with us, enjoy some fantastic bagels, and meet up with some folks. Some other quick things that are going on with the Parks and Rec, they do so much. Uh, again, another department that does so much with so little. So the summer day camp, that has started off, they're in full swing. They've got five sessions, and that is at capacity. The summer swim lessons, they're going full swing. Uh, they've got the Lucky Park Pool, that's open. And it, it is, stays open through August 11th. And there's a schedule, it'd be kinda confusing to share with the group here in this venue, but go online. You can take a look at the adult lap swim, adult social swim, and then the public swim. We've also got summer movies. That's gonna be pretty great. They're gonna begin at 8:00 PM on Thursday, June 13th. Admission is free, and they're gonna be shown every Thursday through July 11th. Of course, July 4th is a holiday, so there won't be a movie there. We've got a worldwide Blood Donor Day. And so on, uh, June 14th, Livestream is gonna be holding a donation event from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Freedom Plaza. And I plan on being there. They do incredible work. And again, that blood donation not only goes for people who are in an, in an accident or some other emergency, but also folks who are battling cancer or other chronic diseases. Uh, this Friday, again, another event. So Friday, 14th, we've got this blood drive from 8:00 to 1:00. Also on Friday, we've got the Morongo Unified School District Summer Meal Kickoff. And so what this is gonna be about, again, that's gonna start at 11:00 AM to go to 1:00 PM on Friday, June 14th. And that is really just going to acknowledge, there's gonna be some free food there. It's also gonna bring awareness to the fact that there is a summer meal program available for our kids for the community. So I'd encourage people to attend both of those events. We're gonna have a basketball camp, and then we, also, the 29 Palms, Juneteenth Council is up and running. And so looking forward to what they're gonna be accomplishing in terms of helping create bylaws, admission statements, and help them understand what it, what it takes to serve a community. And then last thing is, I also attended that Kiwanis Club, uh, pancake breakfast on Saturday. That was really good, over eight, but it was, uh, it was excellent. So appreciated them putting that on. So that is it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, we're good. All right. Happy Father's Day, everyone, all the dads out there. I adjourn this meeting.